Good evening and welcome to tonight's Telephone Town Hall hosted by the Regional Transportation District. My name is Roger and I'll be your moderator tonight as we talk about the Northwest Area Mobility Study, RTD's current study on the best way to provide transit to the Northwest area, sooner rather than later. You'll have an opportunity to learn about the study, why it's being conducted, ask questions or just listen in. We want to ensure that as many people as possible have a chance to participate and we have an impressive lineup of people who are here to share information and answer your questions. RTD Board Chair, Lorraine Anderson, RTD Directors Judy Lubow and Larry Hoy, Broomfield Mayor Pat Quinn, Longmont Councilwoman Katie Witt, and RTD General Manager Phil Washington, RTD Project Manager Nadine Lee and Liz Rayo, who is the project manager for the consulting team conducting the study. If this is your first time on the Telephone Town Hall, here's how it works. To ask our panel a question, please press star three on your keypad and you will be transferred to someone who will take down some basic information and get you in the queue. Since we want to hear from as many of you as possible, we'll only be able to take one question per person. So again, press star three now and you'll be transferred to an operator who will take down your information and get you in the queue to ask a question of our panel. As you're waiting to be called upon, you'll be able to listen in on the conversation. Now, I'd like to introduce Nadine Lee, RTD's Project Manager, who will tell you a little bit about the study and why it's being conducted. Nadine?
Thank you, Roger, and welcome to all of our participants this evening. The Northwest Rail Line is the longest rail line in the RTD Fast Trax program. It covers forty-one miles running from Denver to Longmont through Boulder. The first six miles of Northwest Rail, from downtown Denver to Seventy-First and Lowell in Westminster, are currently under construction as part of the Eagle P3 project. This first phase of Northwest Rail will open in 2016. It's the remaining thirty-five miles of this project that we're talking about in the Northwest Area Mobility Study. In the second phase, Northwest Rail is proposed to share tracks with the BNSF Railway. RTD and the BNSF have held very complex negotiations over several years to determine how to accommodate passenger rail services while maintaining the freight operation. The overall cost to complete this project has doubled and due to our cash flow challenges, RTD has had to push the schedule for completing Northwest Rail out into the future. RTD wants to provide mobility options for the Northwest area sooner rather than later. This is why we're conducting the Northwest Area Mobility Study. It's very important to remember that Northwest Rail, as currently defined, continues to be in the Fast Trax Plan. If this study proposes a different way to provide transit to the Northwest area, that change would have to be approved by a vote of the people. Our goal is to provide you with good, safe, and reliable transit as soon as we possibly can. So if you have a question, please press star three.
All right, thank you very much, Nadine. Next, I'd like to turn it over for just a minute to RTD Board Chair, Lorraine Anderson. Lorraine, good evening. Do you have some opening remarks?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lorraine Anderson, RTD Board Chair. In addition to being Board Chair, I represent our BATA and portions of unincorporated Jefferson County and southwest Adams County. We're glad you're with us tonight because we want to include as many people as possible in the Northwest study process. Last week, we held a Telephone Town Hall for the study and five thousand three hundred people participated at some level during the call. More would have participated, but the call-in number that we published was incorrect, which is unfortunate. But tonight is another opportunity for you to connect with us and give us your thoughts. We have streamlined tonight's Telephone Town Hall in order to answer more of your questions. If you'd like to ask a question, please press star three. Now, I'd like to introduce RTD Director Judy Lubow. Judy?
Hi, everyone. This is Judy Lubow and I'm RTD Director for District I. And District I follows along Route 287, so it covers Broomfield, Lafayette, and most of Longmont. Over the next several months, there should be ample opportunity for you, the public, to stay informed with the study and provide input to us that will help RTD and our stakeholders reach consensus in the study. You know, it's been a challenge for all of us to work together to form a solution, to find a solution for keeping Fast Trax moving forward in the Northwest. But we do need to continue to work together and come up with what we think will be best for the region. That's what this study is all about, collaboration between RTD, CDOT, our stakeholders, and you, the public. We do want to hear from you, so please, if you're interested, press star three if you have a comment or question for this study. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Larry Hoy. I'm the Director for District J.
Good evening. This is Larry Hoy. I'm the Director for District J and I represent all of Westminster, all of Northland, Federal Heights, parts of unincorporated Adams and Jefferson County. To touch on what Director Lubow was saying, working together is very important. As this study moves ahead, we and our partners will look at the options on the table and make decisions together. So, to stay informed, the RTD Fast Trax website will have the most recent information. Also, on the website, you can access fact sheets, newsletters, and answers to frequently asked questions. To get information on the study or to sign up for updates, visit the RTD website at www.rtd-denver.com and click on the Fast Trax tab.
All right, thank you, Director Hoy. So again, if you'd like to ask our panel a question, press star three now on your telephone and we will get to your question as soon as possible. So, we're going to start with our first caller, Eric here live with our audience. Go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, this is Eric and I'd like to hear a little more about the status of the line between Boulder and Longmont that goes through Gun Barrel, what the timing is, what the status is on the station location, any more detail you can provide.
All right, Eric, thank you. Nadine, go ahead.
Thanks for your question, Eric, and I'll take your second question first. You had asked about the status of the station in the Gun Barrel area. That station was identified to be located near North Sixty-third Street along the diagonal and I think the station location was about in the southeast quadrant of that intersection. In terms of the status of the Northwest Rail, which is a subject of our study, as we had mentioned in our introduction, we actually have some cash flow issues and so the actual funding for that rail line is programmed out into the future. So, the Northwest Area Mobility Study is designed to help us identify the possible mobility improvements that could be implemented before the rail line is actually funded.
Thank you, Nadine. Next up is Dorian. Dorian, go ahead with your question.
Hi, we're wondering why, we already voted in the funds for light rail out to Boulder and why we're having to do this again and why you ran out of funds.
All right, thank you. Phil Washington, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for your question. This is Phil Washington, General Manager of RTD. We've had some challenges, the recession, namely and mostly in 2008, 2009, where our sales taxes, we had a sales tax shortfall along with increased material costs. So those two things really have factored in to us not building Fast Trax as fast as we originally thought we would. I think this recession, as you know, was a worldwide recession and the sales tax shortfall, which make up about sixty percent of our revenue, affected the build-out. And so, as we, our sales tax improve, we are finding a way to do more of Fast Trax, but we were not able to do it as fast as we originally thought because of sales tax shortfalls and material cost increases.
Thank you, Phil. Next up is Rebecca. Go ahead with your question for our panel.
Yeah, hi. I have been noticing lately, it appears to be getting harder instead of easier, to get downtown from where I am. I'm in the north part of Westminster, right by Federal, so the thirty-one goes right by here, which is convenient, but it was a lot more convenient when the thirty-one went all the way downtown. It stopped doing that. And also, the exact part of downtown that I wanted to go to, I think the thirty-one and the thirty were the only ones that went there and the thirty has quit running Sundays and also, I think, Saturday evenings and for some reason, the Colfax Federal Transfer Center didn't fit to put up a sign that it had quit running Saturday evenings as well as Sunday. I don't know why.
Rebecca, why don't we have, uh-
Hold on, I'll get to the m- uh, but anyway, yeah, my quest- my question, I guess, oh, and the thirty-one-
Rebecca, let me interrupt.
The thirty-one's also stopped going to the transfer center. It doesn't go all the way there, but my question is-
Rebecca, we're going to have Natalia, go ahead.
Yeah, my-
And try to respond to your question. Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca. There were certain, several changes made to the routes on the west side with the introduction of the west line and the thirty and thirty-one were two of those routes that received some changes. There was duplicate service into downtown and so there were, these changes were made. Overall, the service level of those routes was not reduced. It is still the same. And I'm not exactly sure exactly what the specific question was, but service-wise, the level hasn't changed. It's just that the west line, with introduction of the west line, the routing of the routes into downtown were adjusted.
Mayor Quinn, you want to add something to that? Okay, so, let's, one thing we can offer, if you need help with routing, is to call the information line, three oh three, two nine nine, six thousand. They can help you map out the most efficient route down to your destination from your location. All right, let's take John next. John, go ahead with your question.
Hey, I'm wondering if there's any possibility of the train stopping in downtown Broomfield. I know it's going to stop at the First Bank Center and, you know, when Fast Track was first coming in, I was real excited because I thought it would stop, you know, where the old target was, making the train accessible for people that live in old Broomfield to just walk and get on a train, not drive and stop. So anyway, that's basically my question. Thank you.
John, thank you. Mayor Quinn, do you know anything about Broomfield? Can you help him out there?
I do. I know a little bit about Broomfield. The, uh, the train will not stop at, you know, as passed in 2004, there is no stop at the, uh, at the First Bank Center. The stop that's scheduled for, uh, for Broomfield is at the, uh, the Flatirons Mall, where the current parking ride is right now and that's, that's the current budgeted stations.
All right, thank you. Next up, Vince, you're live for our panel. Go ahead with your question.
Is the name Spence?
I have Vince, but if it's, if your name's Spence, you're live. Go ahead.
Right. I want to thank Chuck Sisk for inviting us to this Town Hall meeting of the year and I'm grateful for you folks doing this. Uh, the four point seven billion was for Fast Trax heavy rail. Uh, I've noticed that the other rail lines have had a rather successful timetable because the private sector has entered into the private-public investments. I'm wondering why the Northwest Rail Line did not enjoy that same private-public partnership. The increased cost, materials, labor, all those excuses are not viable in terms of the voters of this Northwest corridor and so I'm very concerned that the investment has not been forthcoming, but can it be forthcoming now? Because the BRT, ladies and gentlemen of the board, is, is not the full measure of what these voters asked for. Our TODs, we're trying to design them for rail and, you know, you all know how good rail is, but the deadline that you have in mind-
Spence, let me have you, uh-
Should accelerate it-
I'm going to call on Phil Washington to respond to you. Go ahead, Phil.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Spence, for the question. Uh, let me, um, your first part of your question was that the other lines are all heavy rail, I think it was. Uh, we, we have light rail. We have bus rapid transit on US Thirty-Six, which is a concessionary agreement as well. So, that is really, um, you know, in a lot of respects, a public-private partnership as well. Uh, so we're doing that on US Thirty-Six. Uh, as I said earlier, um, you know, sales tax shortfalls, material cost increases are not allowing us to build as fast as we originally wanted to. However, um, we are, and we see a way forward to build much more than, than we thought we could build even fifteen months ago. Uh, so we are making progress. Uh, this study, the subject of this call today, is really looking at what mobility options are the best options for this region. So, we see a way forward even, even in these tough economic times.
Thank you, Phil. If you'd like to ask our panel a question, please press star three on your telephone and I think Director Lubow would like to add a little more to the last call.
Yes, I'm answering the part of the question about why isn't there more private investment and we are certainly looking for it. And one of the things that hopefully the study will do is create a new consensus for the stakeholders in this area so that we're ready to go. We know exactly what the best process is, what the best corridor will look like for this area and that's going to help us looking for funding, for private funding. But while there is some confusion about what's going on up here, um, it's harder to get funding. So, that's part of the purpose of this study.
Thank you, Director. Again, star three on your telephone keypad if you'd like to ask a panel, the panelists, a question. I think Spence mentioned Director Sisk. I might mention, uh, Director Sisk represents Boulder, Louisville, and a portion of Boulder County. He could not be with us this evening, but he assured me he'll be listening to the audio file of the Telephone Town Hall and looks forward to continuing to work tirelessly to ensure that good quality mobility options are implemented in the Northwest area and he sends his regrets. So, let's go next to Lisa. Lisa, you're live. Go ahead with your question.
Thank you. Um, it's a three-part question. I live in Westminster, so my concern is getting rail to the upper Westminster, about a Hundredth and Wadsworth area, not, not just buses, but rail. And I'm wondering if with all the construction you are doing on the Thirty-Six, Highway Thirty-Six corridor, if you are building that right now anticipating that you'll get the funding to put rail all the way up through that corridor with the, you know, bigger overpasses and all that? And if not, if you can't do that, how much of a tax, sales tax increase, is it going to take for us to get light rail up here? And are you going to put that on the ballot this November?
Lisa, thanks. Director Hoy, go ahead.
Lisa, thank you for calling in tonight. Um, the question about the Westminster and rail. The plan in 2004 and the plan today is to build rail. The rail up north is generally commuter rail. It's a little larger terrain. So that plan hasn't changed and it's not necess- it's not being replaced by the construction you see on Highway Thirty-Six. That is for bus rapid transit. That is a large construction project and it is part of Fast Trax. So we have both things going on. Um, the rail alignment does not go up and down Highway Thirty-Six. It's, it's near Thirty-Six. It's in the same general direction, but it's not the exact same alignment. And as far as your sales tax question, right now, there's no plan to go to the border just for an increase in sales tax. That, that has been brought up a couple of times and the directors right now are letting that one just lay. We aren't going to go ahead with that at this time. So, thank you for your call.
Thank you, Director. Next up, William, you're live. Go ahead with your question, please.
Uh, yes, sir. I think Lisa actually touched on my question adequately enough. Thank you.
All right, thanks for joining us. Uh, next up, Laura. Laura, you're live. Go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, hi. Thank you so much for holding this conference. I'm sorry that the Boulder person was unable to join us. I live in Boulder County, very close to the city line. I live near Fifty-Fifth and Arapaho and our area has been tracking light rail very, very, in a very detailed way since it was first put on the ballot. And I have a couple of comments and then I do have a question. Here, when we looked at the ballot, it was very clear that it was light rail and coming originally many years ago from the east coast, light rail in Connecticut is fantastic. It is not noisy. It is beautiful. It's an awesome method of transportation.
Laura, I hate to, uh, I hate to interrupt. Can you go ahead and get to your question?
Okay.
We've got a lot of people waiting to get on, on, uh-
Great, okay. Number one, I feel that light rail sort of was a bait and switch to heavier commuter trains and that what is making it difficult coming to Boulder is the BNSF and they seem to be more like freight trains. They're extremely heavy. They're very noisy and they cut through neighborhoods. Is that the only option for rail still on the table for Boulder?
All right, Laura, thank you. Phil, go ahead.
Uh, yes, hi, Lauren. Thank you for your question. Um, light rail specifically was not called out in the original Fast Trax Plan. Um, it was, it was just not specified as, as light rail. Um, we are doing commuter rail in various quarters and light rail in, in other quarters where it's conducive to do so. Um, so, what we can do, if you have further questions on exactly what was in the light rail or the Fast Trax Plan, we'll be happy to follow up with you. Uh, but, uh, we did not call that out in the original plan.
Phil, maybe you could explain real quick for folks why, you know, we're, we're using commuter rail as the, as the, uh, method for that line. Why is that? Why aren't we using light rail? I mean-
Well, one of the difference, commuter rail versus light rail. Commuter rail, faster speeds, fewer stops. Um, that corridor is really conducive to the larger vehicles. Uh, and the right-of-way issue, um, is huge there too as we look to share that line with Burlington Northern and freight. So, uh, when we look at commuter rail versus light rail, the commuter rail in that particular quarter is actually a better mode. It's a better mode for, uh, the forty-one mile line, which is the longest line in our system, with fewer stops. Um, on that line, I think, what do we have, four or five stops only? So, uh, once it gets past Boulder, three stops, I think, once it gets past Boulder. So, commuter rail is actually a benefit to be on that line. Uh, same as, matter of fact, I would add, same as the east line to the airport, that is commuter rail as well and the north metro, the soon-to-be north metro line, that is commuter rail as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, again, star three if you'd like to ask a question and we're going to go next to Judith. Judith, you're live. Go ahead.
Thank you for taking my call and thanks for getting me on this. I'm, I'm pretty much a beginner at this, but I too am in Boulder where there's always been so much enthusiasm for mass transit. I'm trying to move where I can use light rail. I guess I want to know the timetable because I'm not going to live long enough for some of this stuff to get installed if you guys don't hurry. So, um, I'd like to know what the furthest north places we're going to have light rail out of Denver in the near future.
All right, um, Phil, you want to start? Maybe Katie, come in?
Uh, yes, Judith, thank you, uh, for, uh, the question. Um, the, in terms of the timetable up north, we, as a matter of fact, we are putting out a request for proposal for the north metro line tomorrow, uh, June the twenty-eighth. And this request for proposal, or RFP, uh, will be distributed to potential builders and designers to build out as much as the north metro corridor as we can. So, uh, in terms of timing of when, uh, that line will be built, that is part of the evaluation and the proposal that we will get back from industry of how fast they can do, in this case, the north metro, uh, line. In terms of Northwest, we are doing this, uh, this mobility study which will determine how soon, uh, we can have some mobility options in the Northwest area.
Councilman, go ahead.
Critical piece of information that we're missing is how old are you? (laugh) Uh, and in your lifetime is adjustable. So, I, what I would recommend is if you're looking for something within the next, you know, three years, you'd probably want to look along the more established routes, um, the Eagle and, and, uh, other lines. Now, if, in Boulder County area, uh, you can obviously take BRT pretty soon, starting 2015 and then, uh, but I, I have a feeling that if you're going to be around for the next ten years, I, I feel pretty confident that we'll have rail within spitting distance.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. For those of you just joining the call, my name's Roger. I'm your moderator tonight as we talk with the Regional Transportation District about the Northwest Area Mobility Study. That's RTD's current study on the best way to provide transit to the Northwest area. We have a distinguished panel here, ready to take your questions. If you want to ask a question, press star three on your keypad and you'll be transferred to someone who will take down some basic information and will get you in the queue so that you can ask our panel a question. Before we get back to the calls, why don't I ask General Manager Phil Washington to do a little recap and talk a little bit about Fast Trax and this study.
Thank you, Roger, and thank you for being on the call. Uh, Fast Trax is the largest voter-approved transit expansion program in the country. Uh, currently, we're implementing, uh, five billion in projects across the region. We want to build out the entire Fast Trax program sooner rather than later and that includes the projects in the Northwest region. With this Northwest Area Mobility Study, we want to determine if there is a more cost-effective way to improve transit in the area. This study will include evaluating the feasibility of construction, constructing the Northwest Rail commuter rail line in segments over time. It will evaluate the possibility of extending the north metro rail line to Longmont. It will determine the remaining Fast Trax US Thirty-Six bus rapid transit or BRT commitments. It will evaluate the potential of BRT lines on major arterial roads and it will conduct an analysis of the reverse commute issues on the I Twenty-Five downtown express lanes to accommodate bidirectional traffic. Our partners in the Northwest area, the elected officials and their staffs, along with several other agencies serving the area, are committed to working with us on a solution. One of those elected officials who's worked with RTD extensively is Broomfield, Broomfield Mayor Pat Quinn. Mayor, we appreciate your collaboration on this study and look forward to your comments.
Yeah, Phil, thank you. And I want to thank RTD for, uh, for commissioning the study and, uh, I want to say that there's over forty-some people that are now participating in the study. I want to thank Liz Rao, who's here from HNTB, for the excellent consultants they brought because collaboration is the key for the future and, uh, and we're getting, we're being brought a lot of information for us to make decisions going in the future. There's a, there's a strong feeling within, within our group that we will come to consensus, that we will, uh, we will have solutions for the, for the future. And, uh, I just want to thank RTD and HNTB for, for their excellent efforts to date and I look forward to finishing the study in the next several months.
Thank you, Mayor. The Longmont community has a major vested interest in ensuring that Fast Trax improvements benefit their area. We heard a minute ago from Longmont Councilwoman Katie Witt, who's with us tonight. Um, Councilwoman, why don't we talk a little bit about Longmont's stake in this study?
Thanks, Roger. Our main concern as, as Longmont City Councils is make sure that our residents have the best mobility options available to them. So, the Northwest Area Mobility Study is really looking, um, at how best to offer increased mobility options. Are we going to, uh, stay with the Northwest Rail Line via Boulder as it is currently on the, the plans? Or we're also looking at various alignments coming in from the east and attaching to the north metro line? So, we're looking at the various options, costs, and I know that our neighbors to the north are very interested in making sure that Longmont gets rail because they definitely want to have rail come up to Bertha, Loveland, and Fort Collins. So, Longmont will not be the, the end of the line, hopefully. But the collaboration that is going on between RTD and CDOT and all your local elected officials in the Northwest area, um, this study is really looking at what are our needs? How do we get to deliver the mobility options everybody was promised at the, with the money that we have available?
All right, thank you. Let's get back to our questions. Carl, thanks for holding and you're live for our panel.
X every day back in the first-
Hold on, Carl. I, I didn't hit the right button, so start over. You're live now.
Okay. Um, I do ride the RTD every day to downtown on the eighty-six X- Okay, um, I do ride the RTD every day to downtown on the eighty-six X, and, um, when, uh, we all voted for, maybe this was mentioned earlier, it sounds like it may have been, we, when we voted for, for light rail, uh, years and years ago, we assumed that the whole metro was gonna get it, um, and, uh, the only ones that benefited are, you know, on the lines, and their property values have all gone up. The eighty-six X is a, is a well-planned route, I think. Um, however, it does have issues with weather and baseball games and everything else that happens downtown that, uh, just the street traffic, you know, the bus traffic is affected by. So, it's not as reliable as all the other, um, well, I don't find it as reliable mass transit as the peers I have downtown working at, uh, at CenturyLink, so...
Carl, why don't I, um, ask, uh, Natalie, just to mention, uh, a little bit about, uh, service cha- oh, we'll talk, we'll have Nadine. Nadine, talk about it. Go ahead, Nadine.
Thanks for your comments, Carl. We really appreciate you participating in this call. Um, I do wanna mention to you, um, I know we focus a lot on the Northwest Rail Project. The US Thirty-Six BRT project is actually under construction right now, and if you've seen the construction going on out there, there's a, it's going pretty fast. Um, and I did wanna mention to you that the eighty-six X will actually benefit from the work that's being done on the US Thirty-Six Corridor, because the, um, current, um, managed lanes and HOV lanes are, are going to be extended up to Sheridan. So, um, you know, the BRT services will stop at the Westminster Center parking right in the stations, and so if you're getting on, on the buses there, then you'll be able to get into downtown more quickly.
All right, thank you. I might, uh, ask, uh, Director Lubau if she wants to add anything?
Hi, um, this is Judy Lubau, and I live up north too, so I feel the pain of the folks from the north who want their rail and want, want it yesterday and are upset that we haven't gotten it. So, I, I feel your pain. I did wanna say, though, that there are things happening, and, and that's very exciting. Um, as Nadine said, the, um, Bus Rapid Transit is being constructed right now, and that's very exciting. Plus, we're seeing, we're actually seeing movement on the North Metro Line, which isn't the Northwest Line, but it is north, it parallels I twenty-five, and we're seeing a request for proposal go out, I believe, tomorrow. So, that's, that's so exciting, so it's not as if nothing is happening. And this study that we're doing is, the aim of it is to reach a consensus of all the communities in the area as to the best way to move forward. So, once that happens, we can really start looking for funding to start moving faster on the Northwest Line. So, just be patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Next up is John. Uh, John, go ahead.
Yes, um, I am from Boulder, and, uh, just taking the survey, I noticed, I mean, it just seems like the entire, all our options boil down to, uh, funding shortfalls. And from the survey, the two options were, uh, increased sales taxes and increased property taxes. And I just, um, I'm wondering why we wouldn't tax, tax the user more directly? I mean, it seems like the transportation system is largely filled by, by drivers and cars. And why not tax people for use into congested areas like Boulder and get funding from that instead of relying on things that are more indirect?
All right, John, thank you. Uh, Phil, do you wanna respond?
Yes, John, thank you for the question. Uh, we are constantly, uh, looking for funding options. Um, uh, I am familiar with the congestion, uh, tax, uh, idea that, that you put forth. Uh, we will continue to look for ways to build out FastTrax, uh, faster. Um, and that is, that's one of the options. Um, uh, there's, uh, a lot of talk around the country about fuel tax, uh, congestion, uh, user tax. Um, there's a lot of ideas floating around. One thing we do know is that we have to find the funding to rebuild and build our infrastructure in this country, and we'll continue to do so.
Uh, Mayor, Quinn?
Yeah, I wanted to comment (cough). The Bus Rapid Transit, uh, is going to be running along the managed lanes, which are being constructed right now, and the total cost of those managed lanes are, are four hundred million from Pecos to, to Boulder. A hundred million of that financing is being paid by tolling, uh, for single occupancy and probably double occupancy. And there is a congestion pricing component to that, and that's part of the reason why we got tiger funding from the federal government. So, there is congestion pricing that will be used on US Thirty-Six, uh, on the lanes that will then benefit, uh, the Bus Rapid Transit.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Andrew, uh, you're live. Go ahead with your question.
Great, thank you. Uh, I understand that the sales tax revenues have fallen short of the initial projections and that materials and construction costs have increased, uh, in the meantime. My question is, why then, instead of sharing the pain across the whole FastTrax region, uh, these construction delays seem to be primarily concentrated in the Northwest region? Uh, it seems like other lines are being built, uh, if not on the original schedule, at least they're, you know, currently under construction, whereas in the Northwest, uh, we're still waiting for a long time to see any sort of rail happen in that, that region.
Um, General Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, Andrew, for, uh, for the question. Great question. Um, you know, as we look at these projects, to build out of these projects, we try to make the best decisions that we can make, uh, with what we're faced with and with the proposals that come to us. Um, with the east line to the airport, the goal line to Ivada, um, and also about six and a half, uh, miles of this Northwest Rail Line that we're talking about, we packaged all of those things up into a public-private partnership, where we were able to execute a billion-dollar full funding grant agreement for those particular lines based on the Cost Effectiveness Index, uh, and the ridership, uh, projections on those particular lines. And so, as we look at lines, uh, across the region, uh, and, and, and those two, uh, in particular, the line to the airport and the line to Ivada, it made more sense and, uh, a, a great deal of sense to execute those lines when we were getting one billion dollars from the feds on that. And so, as we look at the system, uh, and look at opportunities as they present itself, we jump on those opportunities, uh, and we'll do the same thing up north.
Thank you, Phil. Next is John. John, go ahead with your question.
Uh, hi. First of all, uh, really appreciate these meetings, uh, hope you continue to have them. Uh, the only, uh, nitpick I would make is there's not enough notice of them other than, uh, getting a phone call when the meeting is taking place. Um, my question is multi-part. I've heard, and you've somewhat explained, uh, where there's a North Metro portion of this line and a Northwest portion of this line. I'd like to know where one begins and one ends. Uh, I'm specifically interested, I, I live around, uh, Church Ranch and Thirty-Six. Uh, I think at one time you had a station planned behind the, uh, Pet Smart up there. I'm not sure if that's still planned. Um, you're, you mentioned that, uh, the, uh, North Metro Line, uh, has an RFP that either just went out or is about to go out. Uh, where is that too? Or, really, my question is, what portion of the line is fixed and what portion of the line is, is loose, uh, and could move around? And then, uh, for the fixed portion, do you anticipate, uh, do you have in mind a current schedule? Uh, and will it be constructed in phases, and what is the schedule for those phases? Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. Director Hoy, go ahead.
John, um, let's take one line at a time. Let's talk about the North Metro Line. In fact, there is an RFP going out tomorrow for the, for that line. Uh, we would hope to have information by the end of the year on how that will be constructed and what the timeframe will be. As far as it being fixed or not fixed, it's fixed. We own the rights of way right now. It goes up from Denver Union Station up through Commerce City and basically, uh, Little Northland and Thornton up to Highway Seven, about where the Costco is up in there, a little bit, uh, east of there. Though, that's not gonna change, that's where it's going. Over on the Northwest Line, which is probably more important to you, since you're living right over there, uh, that alignment, um, well, the first phase of that will be done in twenty sixteen. So, it's important to know that that line is under construction right now. Uh, it will only go up to Seventy-First and Irving, but it will someday continue on up those tracks that the Burlington Northern Santa Fe owns. So, if you're familiar with the, um, that, uh, shopping center up there by Church Ranch, you are in fact right, the, the station is planned for just behind, uh, that, I think it's a Pet Smart or, at, at the north end of that shopping center. And then they'll continue on up through their alignment. It doesn't necessarily go right up, um, Highway Thirty-Six. So, I think that probably, uh, and that's a fixed, uh, uh, too. It's, that won't change. That alignment's there. So, uh, I think that covers your questions. Thank you very much.
Uh, Phil, go ahead. You wanted to add something?
Yeah, let me add something, John. Uh, I, I, I think part of your question wa- on North Metro was fixed or loose, and I interpreted your question to say, well, how far are we going? Um, and so, we won't know that, uh, until we get the proposals in, which will be, uh, as Director Hoy said, uh, toward the fall or, or toward the end of this year. And so, we have a finite, uh, amount of money, amount of funding. And so, uh, in effect, what we're saying is, we want to see the proposals to see how much they can do with that finite amount of money. And then, uh, uh, if we can't get all the way, then what innovative financing tools can we use to get the rest of the way? So, I think that was kinda where you were coming from on part of that question.
All right, Phil, thank you. This might be a good, uh, opportunity for me to ask Liz. Uh, you're the project manager for the study. Maybe you could talk a little bit about how you're engaging the public and taking input, uh, as we, uh, move forward on this study?
Thank you, Roger. As we move forward on this study, there'll be, uh, opportune times during the study process to engage the public, uh, in, uh, getting feedback on where we are and what, uh, uh, alternatives are being recommended, especially in the short term, uh, until, uh, the rail corridor can be built out. Uh, what we intend to do is engage, uh, civic organizations and, um, other means of, uh, newsletters and websi- and putting the information on the website, and try to, uh, give information to people, uh, through the various channels that they're used to receiving information. So, uh, there's nothing extra to look at, that you'll be getting that through those sources. We are also going to have a series of public meetings, uh, towards the, um, I would say, uh, the fall, uh, uh, of this year, uh, once we have, uh, definitive phasing solutions, uh, that we can present to the public. Thanks, Roger.
Thank you. Liz, next. Oh, we were gonna ask one and it went away. Uh, Becky, go ahead. You're next.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanna say that in view of the delays and these financial considerations, I think it's really important for the study to consider less costly, lightweight infrastructure, uh, high-tech, clean tech, tech types of solutions, such as Swift Tram that has come along in Boulder that have been invented in the intervening years since earlier FastTrax planning for these corridors took place. What do you think?
Uh, Liz, do you wanna respond?
Yes, we have interviewed, uh, the, uh, technology, um, um, folks who are, um, uh, moving forward on Swift Trams, trying to develop that, and, um, we have, uh, in those conversations, we've asked them what are their plans, uh, for, to show us a, a, a demonstration of where that, uh, is working today. And so, uh, they know they're working on that to do so. But what we are concerned with in the study is that, um, uh, that we have provided seamless transportation network, uh, for our, uh, for the riders, so that they don't have to do very many transfers, uh, to the RTD system. So, we're looking how to integrate a different mode, uh, considering we'll have rail up to Seventy-First and Lowell, and then, uh, there are plans for Bus Rapid Transit, so that one of the things that is very important to our riders is not to have to transfer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Next, Barbie, uh, your question for our panel. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering, on the old Westminster area, my understanding, if correct, is that Westminster's planning to make that area now downtown Westminster with people that will work there, that will live there, and that will shop there. So, what plans are being thought about as far as access to rail transportation, uh, regarding that area?
Barbie, thank you. I'm gonna have Larry Hoy. You were just on a tour yesterday, Larry.
That's right. Uh, the city of Westminster, uh, just gave all the directors a tour out there yesterday, and it, um, when all that comes together, you're absolutely right. The Westminster, the old Westminster Mall will be a live-work-play area, and, uh, there'll be a, a plethora of different kinds of buildings and activities going on out there. So, to your question, where will the train integrate there? The city of Westminster has committed to, um, working with us on a train station right across the street. If you're familiar with the area, just on the south side of Eighty-Eighth, which is the road on the south side of the mall, um, there's rail tracks there now, and that's exactly where the, uh, station will be. So, it's basically across the street. There'll be some improvements made there, so the connections between the mall and the station will be a lot easier. So, that's good news. Thank you for calling.
Larry, thank you. Next, uh, Lisa, go ahead with your question for our panel.
My question is, um, if funding is the issue, what do I have to do to get another sales tax increase on the ba- ballot this fall?
Well, let's see who wants to take that one. Chairman, Chair Lorraine Anderson. How, maybe talk a little bit about just the, the, uh, what all the board has done over the last several years to, to weigh funding options and, and additional tax increases.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, the board has looked at, uh, sales tax, um, increases several times until about twenty-ten. Um, at that time, it just seemed that there was not a lot of people that were interested in increasing, uh, the sales taxes that they paid. So, the board has worked to build as much as they can, as fast as they can, within our present budget. I believe after this study, um, we should again look at the feasibility of going out for a sales tax. There are some other options available, uh, in working with the Colorado, um, uh, Department of Transportation. And transportation is a huge issue in the state of Colorado and is underfunded. So, there may be some options that we could use, uh, working with, uh, CDOT and finding ways to further, uh, uh, build transportation in the Northwest area. So, it's a keep tuned kinda project, but thank you so much for your question.
Thank you, Lorraine. Phil, maybe I could have you, uh, talk real quickly about what's happened on I two-two-five as an example of creative, uh, ways that we're building more with less?
Well, thank you for the question, Lisa. Um, uh, one of the things that we've done is really reach out to the private sector and really reach out to, uh, the, the international private sector and see how we can leverage the funding that we do have. We've been very, very successful with that. We've, uh, revised our, uh, unsolicited proposal policy to allow for the private sector to come in much more easily, easier, uh, with their ideas to help us build out, um, the FastTrax system. As a result of that, uh, uh, engaging the private sector, um, we were able to do the I two-two-five light rail quarter, uh, by having an unsolicited proposal, uh, come in, and us doing that particular line, millions, I think sixty-five million dollars below our internal estimate. And so, now, the same thing is happening on North Metro as we put out, uh, a request for a proposal, and our hope is that, uh, the successful proposal comes in millions of dollars below internal estimates.
Thank you, Phil. Next, Hannah, go ahead with your question. Thanks for holding.
Hi, um, yeah, I just was wondering if there was any way that they could look into some, you guys could look into some temporary solution for I twenty-five? Like, I live all the way up by Highway Seven, and I was just wondering, 'cause right now I take the one-twenty-X and one-twenty-two-X from One Hundred and Twentieth. But I was hoping that maybe you guys could look into... hoping that maybe you guys could look into seeing if there's a way to expand even those same lines up further north?
Hannah, thank you. Natalie?
Yeah, hi, Hannah. Um, at this point, we're not looking to extend either the one twenty X or the one twenty two X because we don't have the facilities up there to serve our passengers. However, CDOT is looking to make improvements on the north I twenty five segment, the HOV lanes, uh, up to a hundred and twentieth, and they also are, uh, looking at extending those further, all the way up to State Highway seven. They're, um, they have a study going on right now, and they're looking for funding to make that happen. Um, that could either be managed lane extension up to State Highway seven or for us, um, on shoulder operations instead of managed lanes. With that plan, we have included potential stations along either a hundred and forty fourths and at State Highway seven, as well as a hundred and twenty fourths and Claude Court. And once we would have those stations in place and hopefully also have some slip ramps, we would be able to do the operations and provide the service for the north of a hundred and twentieth.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, those of you that are looking for more information or want to stay up to date on the latest information, you can go to the RTD website, and that's W W W dot RTD dash Denver dot com, and click on the FastTrax tab, and you'll be able to sign up for updates and provide comments or ask questions on the Northwest area mobility studies. So, please take advantage of that if you'd like to stay up to date. Uh, next question is Vicki. Vicki, you have a follow-up on a question earlier. Go ahead. Vicki, are you still with us?
Oh, yes, I didn't hear my name.
Go ahead.
I have a two-parter about since you were talking about going out for some proposal. Have you looked at the Portland, Oregon Fast Transit? They have a wonderful system that goes from Portland out to the suburbs and back. It's been, it's been in place for years, and they seem to be very progressive as a town.
All right, so, go ahead.
And my other part, my other part, my other part, sorry about that, is, uh, has Burlington Northern authorize use of their rail going from Longmont to Boulder? Because, um, I can't see how a freight train can be combined with a passenger train because the freight trains are a mile long.
Great, really good questions, Vicki. Uh, Phil, go ahead. Great questions.
Uh, yes, thank, thank you, Vicki, for the questions. Uh, let me, uh, go with your first one, uh, first. The Portland system, yes. Uh, we, uh, frequently converse, uh, with our sister agencies. We know quite a bit about TriMet up there, um, um, their streetcar operation is a huge economic boon for the area. Um, we know about their, uh, downtown to suburb, uh, light rail line, and so, uh, the answer is, we, uh, often, uh, exchange best practices, not just with Portland, um, but, uh, other agencies, both east and west. We actually have a Western CEO Roundtable, uh, that I am a part of, that we just implemented, um, with the general managers and CEOs of, uh, Dallas, Salt Lake City, Portland, Austin, Texas, and others. So, we do that on a regular basis. Uh, in terms of BNSF, your second question, uh, have we, uh, talked with BNSF and got their approval from Longmont to Boulder? Uh, that is also part of this mobility study to coordinate with the railroads, uh, as we move forward with the best mobility option, uh, for the Northwest Quadrant.
Thanks, Phil. Dana, you are, uh, up. Thanks for your patience. Go ahead with your question.
Um, I was wondering what the target date was for the commuter rail in Boulder and if there would be a stop in Lewisville, and if this would also, uh, there would be a stop to the airport.
All right, thank you. Uh, Nadine, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for your question. Um, the answer to your question is that we, as part of the Northwest Rail Project, there was a, there is a, um, stop planned in, or station planned in the, in the downtown Lewisville area, and as we have mentioned before, this, um, Northwest Area Mobility Study is looking at the, um, the possibility of doing, um, earlier investments in the rail project or possibly alternatives for interim improvements to mobility in the Northwest region. I think you also asked about, um, connections to the airport. Um, any of the, uh, projects that we, uh, would plan to implement as part of the Northwest Area Mobility Study would eventually connect to downtown Denver where there would also be a connection to, um, the east corridor going to the airport.
Uh, okay. Natalie, go ahead.
Um, just to follow up real quick, uh, the AB bus will still continue to operate from the Boulder area to DIA, and, uh, we are looking to possibly reroute that once the US thirty six BRT comes online to run from Boulder through Flatiron and then along the Parkway over to DIA directly.
Terrific, thank you. Next, Al, uh, it's your turn. Go ahead with your question.
Yeah, hi, uh, I, I was, uh, had a question about the BRT. Um, will it have, uh, exclusive, uh, an exclusive lane running from downtown? Will it, will it originate at, uh, at Union Station? And also, uh, is it planned to have, um, ease, um, access to the, um, Northwest Light Rail Line or, uh, Heavy Rail Line at, at, uh, Broomfield?
All right, thanks, Al. Uh, Nadine?
Thanks for your question, Al. Uh, so, the, the BRT is actually, it, it will originate at Denver Union Station, and it'll use the I twenty five, um, hot lanes that exist today, um, to go up I twenty five up to US thirty six where the, the HOV and the, uh, managed lanes will actually continue, um, all the way up to Table Mesa. And, um, so, so there will be a travel time advantage there for the buses. And I think your second question was about, um, actually, I'm sorry, I forgot the... Oh, I'm sorry, the connection between, um, the rail line and the BRT. Um, the, the station in Broomfield, um, for the BRT is actually about a half a mile, um, to the west of the proposed, or the, um, the proposed station at a hundred and sixteenth in Broomfield. And that station was actually not part of the original plan, but had been studied in our environmental evaluation when we looked at the Northwest Rail.
Yeah, this is Pat Quinn, Mayor of Broomfield. I also wanted to make a comment. You asked if the, uh, the buses would have exclusive use of the lanes, and they will not. Uh, but there is an agreement, uh, between CDOT and, and RTD and all the, uh, the agencies that, uh, whatever, whatever, uh, whether it be HOV, high occupancy vehicles or single occupancy vehicles that are paying a toll, uh, the buses will always have a priority, and the tolls will be set at, at a rate that makes sure that the buses will always be moving at, at a set speed. And so, uh, uh, it, so it's kind of a, it's, it's a good thing because we're going to get financing off the tolls that are being paying, being paid, and there is an agreement that the tolls will be adjusted based on congestion pricing to make sure the buses move at, uh, at least forty-five miles per hour, I believe, or, or, but there, there's agreement. Fifty, at least fifty-five miles per hour. So, uh, so, uh, we're, we're going to have the best of both worlds.
Thanks, uh, Mayor. Next, Laura, thank you for your, uh, patience. Go ahead with your question.
Okay, thanks for being so patient. I am the Boulder person, and a couple of quick comments, and then I'm going to offer a potential solution.
Uh, Laura, I have to interrupt you. We are down to the last couple of minutes. If you could go right to your question.
Freight trains, okay. Freight trains are perceived in Boulder as creating a lot of noise pollution, all different types of pollution, and are not considered really green. We're a very green city. My question is, is it possible to use part of Burlington Northern tracks, but is there a place that naturally you could convert to light rail? I understand it would involve the payment of, to lay the rail.
Phil, is there any way to, to mix, uh, commuter and light rail in the same quarter?
I don't think so. Um, in terms of technology, wouldn't be very efficient. I will say that when we talk about commuter rail, uh, we're talking about newer technology. It's not the billowing, uh, diesel, uh, choo-choo train, uh, that, uh, pollutes everything. And so, we're dealing with some very advanced technology that I think, uh, and electronic, uh, electric multiple unit, or EMU, uh, that we're doing, uh, on, on the east line. So, so, we think that, uh, the technology that will be employed, uh, will be such that it will be efficient and it will not pollute.
Thanks, Phil. Well, folks, we've come to the end of our Telephone Town Hall. We are sorry if we didn't get to your question tonight, but you can still leave us a message or comment at the end of the call, so just stay on the line. On behalf of RTD and everyone here on, on our panel, we'd like to thank you for taking part in this event. Have a good evening.